I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held on October 21st, 2014 at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers Building. Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Howagie.
Here.
Councilmember Garrison.
Present.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here. And we have Gabriel McCouch with us tonight to say the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, she'll share a little bit of information about herself.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we know that you're on the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. You want to share a little more information?
I've been on the commission for about two and a half years now and I do have questions that I could help out with in our community.
Great, and you guys have a lot of accomplishments as the council hears.
Yes.
Reports from time to time and you do a lot in the community to support our youth. Lot of activities and you stay very busy.
Yes, we do.
And you work with the council and report to the council. Thank you very much for being here tonight, you're very much appreciated and we have a certificate for you. I'm the tablet of my colleagues of the City Council and would like to give the certificate to you and thank you for your contribution. You're welcome. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, council members, this last weekend, Saturday, we had a really nice turnout for the Arizona Grape Stomp 5K, about 110 participants and beautiful weather for it. We will begin paving the south end of 12th Street, this, beginning this next week, so we're seeing that come to conclusion and the north half will be out to bid here shortly. This weekend, our Parks and Recreation Department is hosting probably as many as 30 teams from the amateur softball association. It's the Second Annual Girls Fast Pitch Softball. We anticipate about 400 people coming into town for that event, so it'll be a busy weekend down at the fields. The, our annual fall festival is next Friday, October 31st, at the Old Town Park and the Old Town Merchants again will be passing out candy, so for a safe night, come on down, participate in that. And then the second Saturday in November will be our annual Walking On Main event, which should be bigger and better than ever. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, council members, Mr. Pratt.
Yeah, I've got three things. One is, I wanted to remind everyone that Thursday night at Yavapai College, there's a free concert with a dynamite jazz band, it's called Basie and Beyond. They'll be playing songs of Count Basie, Charlie Parker, Duke Ellington, and it starts at 7:00 and depending on the weather, it'll be in the pavilion or M137, but the college is trying to serve our side of the mountain here and bring some of these events to us, so if you can go, show up, tell your friends, the more people we, we have show up, the more likely we're to have more of these events and I think it's a good thing.
It's a great thing and that's this Thursday night.
Yeah, that's Thursday night, 7 o'clock.
And that would be October...
23rd.
23rd, because the show will run longer than that date, so October 23rd.
Yeah, October 23rd and it's Basie and Beyond, it'll be fun. The college is having another event on November 12th, uh, 10th, November 10th, that they asked me to mention, it's called the Remembrance Day National Roll Call. It's an M137, there'll be a reading of names of those who have given their lives to our country by serving in the military and it's a really important event to, to honor those people. So, anybody who can attend, I encourage you to, and anyone who would like to read can contact Yavapai College and ask for Patty Shelton and they're looking for people to read some of the names. And again, I think it's important that we honor our veterans. And then I want to stress again, on November 8th is Walking on Main and one of the things I'm most excited about is we have three really good bands this year and it's free. It's going to be a great event.
Good. And Mr. Alinsky, do you want to talk about the sidekick to Walking on Main?
Sure, yeah, thanks. So, this year for Walking on Main, we're doing, the Cottonwood Historic Preservation Commission is hosting the home tour. It's the first time we've had a home tour here in Cottonwood and all the homes and businesses that are on the tour are located here in Old Town, it's all within walking distance. We have between eight and nine homes on the tour, homes and businesses, and all the proceeds for the event are going to benefit, to, to help with the restoration effort of the Civic Center. You can buy tickets there at the Civic Center, you can also buy them online ahead of time if you'd like, on the City of Cottonwood's website and the Cottonwood Historic Preservation Commission's link on the website, there's a link there where you can buy the tickets ahead of time or just get them at the, at the gate there at the Civic Center. And we are still looking for volunteers, we have plenty of room left for volunteers, so if you know of anyone who'd like to volunteer, lunch is free and it'll be a great event with just a lot of people, we're generating a lot of buzz about the event, so we're very excited.
All right, cool.
Mayor's going to volunteer, so...
I'm volunteering, yes.
So too is the vice mayor.
I have another event to work in in between, but I'm going to be there. Anything else, council? Okay, on October 9th, Spectrum Healthcare, which is located behind the Maverick Station, opened its doors for a grand opening and quite a few of us from council were there and to welcome them and it's the former Verdi Valley Guidance Clinic and they've expanded their services dramatically and tremendously, a great addition to the community. After that meeting, I met with Jeremiah Cota of Congressman Paul Gozer's office and staff, the city manager and Mr. Whitmer also met with me and we spoke about the reauthori- reauthorization of the Older Americans Act, which has been stalled in Congress and with all of the baby boomers hitting 62 or 65 or 70 retirement ages, this is a very important bill. We talked about water issues and Mr. Whitmer filled them in on issues involving Cottonwood and the Verdi Valley and, and we talked about the leadership that is needed in the House and Senate to ensure a supply of water for people and nature and we talked about mat force and the different things our community has done to improve quality of life and reduce substance abuse, especially among our youth. I attended the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission interviews as an observer on October 9th and not all of the people who applied were able to attend, you know, our youth, they have swim meets out of town and so the youth commission is working very hard to try to catch up with everybody to get those interviews completed. There was a ribbon cutting at the junction next to Circle K and there was a chili cook-off for staff and city volunteers at Riverfront Park on the 10th. On October 11th, many city employees, lots and lots of employees, attended the Kids Against Hunger Packing where more than a quarter million meals were packed for partly starving children in Haiti and up to 50% of the meals, they have come up with a macaroni and cheese dish that's pretty tasty and 50% of the meals will actually be given out here in the Verdi Valley to people in need, people that are hungry here. There is a surprising amount of hunger, especially among children in our Verdi Valley. And I would like to thank Steve Horton, our city attorney, and Larry Dawson, Captain Larry Dawson of our fire department, who headed up the teams and got everybody on track and we appreciate your work on this important event in our community. Staff and I met with the New Verdi Valley Humane Society Executive Director, Susan Harley, on the 13th and we had a great discussion about where they're going and how we can all work together. Casey Rooney and I toured Gerona on Tuesday and Gerona is for sale and Mary Akris showed us all of the different things the building could be used for, including offices, a bed and breakfast hotel, a cafe as it is used for now, and it has an amazing garage where a bicycle, jeep, or ATV rental business could be created. And if you would like to contact Mary for a tour of, of the facility, the building, she's having tours on Tuesday morning, so just let Mary know if you would like to see that building. And it has a lot of potential for a business in Cottonwood. On Tuesday, I attended the Yavapai College Board Meeting and spoke at Call to the Public about the Verdi Valley Teen Center, Kids at Hope, and the Expect More Arizona Resolution that the city council passed. Dr. Wills is interested, she called me back and is interested in learning more about these organizations. I also attended on Friday the Southwest Wine Center's annual fundraiser, well, that was Saturday, sorry, that was held at the college's wine center and I saw council member Timmy Alinsky and his wife Ruth in attendance and it was a very nice event. It was held outside and you just walked around and from table to table and really got to meet a lot of people. A mayor's coffee talk was held on October 15th and we had Casey Rooney with us to talk about economic development and he's talking about an upcoming segment on Cox, Channel 7 and Channel 3, the Cox 7 program is complete and the Channel 3 program is being filmed on Monday, October 20th, that was this past Monday. This is essentially free advertising and he, he and Lana Tolleson at the chamber think that the value of the public relations over the past year equaled approximately $500,000. This is all of the, the different things that the chamber has done to, to support tourism. And Lana will tell you, people just call her up, she has a hard time keeping up with all the calls of people that want to come to Cottonwood and, and learn about what's going on here, so that's very exciting. On the evening of October 15th, I attended the Local First Arizona Mixer in the Verdi Valley with Fire Mountain Wines and where other, which other council members, Mr. Alinsky was there, was anybody else there, and Mr. Garrison and the vice mayor. So, Local First is a great organization and we're, we're, most of us are members of that organization. And what they really try to do is get people to think about shopping locally and at least spending 10% of what they spend, like for Christmas shopping or whatever, in local small stores and they said it's amazing the difference that that can make in your local economy. On October 16th, I attended the 23rd Annual Area Agency on Aging Elder Issues Conference in Flagstaff and the theme was Alzheimer's Disease. An interesting and troubling statistic that was shared is that there are 410 cases of Alzheimer's Disease diagnosed in the United States every eight hours. 410 cases every eight hours. It's hard to unravel the mystery, it is the sixth leading cause of death over age 65 or than prostate or breast cancer. One in nine Americans over 65 has Alzheimer's, one in three over 85 have it and 95% of the diagnoses, diagnoses are irreversible, but 5% are reversible, you know, somebody might be on too much medication or something like that. There are now some prescriptions that can slow the disease, the biggest issue is the caregivers and we have to watch for caregiver stress and get support and resources for them, including respite care. And that's a big issue with, as they say, the baby boomer generation coming up and it's going to be a huge drain on public resources and, you know, hopefully we can find a cure or make things better for those, those who suffer from it and their families because it's hard on families too. That evening, I attended the Chamber Mixer, which was held at the Copper Art Museum in Clarkdale and I, the vice mayor was there and anybody else that I didn't see. And that place is just amazing, I highly recommend that you go and see the Copper Art Museum in Clarkdale if you get a chance. On October 17th, I welcomed members of the Arizona Association of Economic Development Developers at the Recreation Center. On Saturday, I attended the Grape Stomp and took a lot of great photos and you can see those photos on my Facebook page, which is under Diane Jones, spelled J-O-E-N-S. Over the noon hour, it was my great honor to attend a ribbon cutting along with council member Howagie for Kelly Casper and she is the veterinarian and owner of Danza Del Sol Veterinary Medical Clinic. Dr. Casper is the daughter of former council member Clara Shamrell. She will be providing care for large animals and small animals and in fact has a room for three horses in her facility on Justin Drive next to the Verdi Valley Ambulance Company and it's really great, we always talk about wanting our, our kids to, who grow up in the Verdi Valley, to stay in the Verdi Valley and this is a great example of that happening. It's exactly what Dr. Casper did, starting her own business and her facility is amazing. On November 13th at 6:00 PM, the city council will hold a public hearing for water and wastewater rates at the Cottonwood Recreation Center and on October 23rd, the Verdi Valley Caregivers will be having their annual fundraising event and I'm signed up to attend that, so it's been a busy few weeks for all of us.
Are those in November?
Pardon?
Aren't those in November?
No, it's this Thursday, the Verdi Valley Caregivers, but the Verdi Valley Caregivers is October 23rd, but the rate hearing is November 13th. Did I say that? Did I say October? Thank you.
I heard October.
Okay, it's not in October, that date is over, it's November 13th. Okay, thank you very much. The next item is introduction of new employees. Mr. Bartosz.
Here he comes. Mayor, council, as you recall, but it seems you were gracious enough to allow us to have an assistant for our finance offices so we could start restaffing and having some sort of internal controls, so we wouldn't have the auditors on our back about our internal controls. And we were pleased, after quite a bit of searching, we were really pleased to bring on Mary Jacobson, she's originally from California, she's been in Arizona for the past eight years. She moved to Cottonwood over a year ago when her husband accepted a position with, as a principal for Cottonwood Jerome Elementary School, I mean, Clarkdale Jerome Elementary School. And prior to coming to the city of Cottonwood, she was a bookkeeper at a small company in Payson. Mary enjoys cooking, is an avid reader and is a very enthusiastic ball, baseball fan and she seems to get along with Don, our auditor, really well and Jason, who are very ba- baseball fans, they get to hoot and holler a little bit about her Padres. And she enjoys, yes, and she enjoys watching games with her seven-year-old son. I won't keep you very long, I'd like to introduce Mary Jacobson, our administrative assistants over at the Administrative Services Office. If you happen to have her interest or something, come on in.
Hello.
So, we are very excited that you're coming to join our team, our city team and going to be serving the citizens of Cottonwood and the Verdi Valley. We appreciate that service and wish you the very best.
I'm very excited to be here.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Caleb, would you mind taking a photo of the city manager and Mr., Mr. Rudy Rodriguez and Mary Jacobson? Thank you very much. Next are proclamations, we have two. The first one is proclaiming November 1st, 2014 as Veterans History Project Day and we have Jolene Pearson with us today to accept the proclamation and do you want to come up and share a little bit of information?
I would love to. The Veterans History Project is a national project of the Library of Congress mandated by unanimous vote, if you can believe that, of Congress in the year 2000. And the Sedona Public Library is the only official partner north of Prescott in Arizona, so we have reached out to a lot of veterans in the Verdi Valley. What the project does is to record the oral history of our nation's veterans in their own words. We do the interviews at the Sedona Library on Wednesday mornings and the interviewers, basically me, I've done, I don't know, probably 160 interviews over the last seven years, so I have a little experience. And we then put the interviews on a DVD, the most important one of which I think is the one we provide to the veteran. Library of Congress probably thinks the one they get is the most important and it is important because it then is archived as part of our nation's history. The project's open to veterans of all branches of the service, of course, but also to civilians who served in some kind of a support position in support of our military. Interviewed a couple of very interesting ladies who were Rosie the Riveter types and we have it, I've interviewed actually from Cottonwood, an aircraft designer, so folks like that too. It's very important, I think, because it gives an opportunity to record a wide variety of experiences, it's not just the generals or the war heroes or the person who did something extraordinary or just someone who wrote their memoirs, it's everybody and every veteran has a story to tell. I've had vets say, hey, I didn't do anything and my response is, you did the job you were assigned to do and I haven't heard a boring interview yet and yours won't be the first. So, we would love to have veterans from Cottonwood contact us. I would actually love to start a volunteer group for the Veterans History Project here in Cottonwood, but failing that, come to Sedona, tell your story. And the reason you're proclaiming November 1st is, now, this will get everybody to come and tell their story, right? We have a luncheon every year and November 1st, we are having our luncheon in your beautiful recreation center here in Cottonwood. So, I have some business cards, I would like to leave here if I may.
Okay, if you want to hand them to the city manager there and...
Oh, okay.
Right there in the blue shirt?
Right in the blue shirt.
Yeah, and he can pass those around.
We, we would love to have people contact us and come and be interviewed. Do it, not for yourself, do it for your family, because then you can make copies and your family members can have a copy and seven generations later, people will still be able to hear you telling your story and see you telling your story, which is actually much more meaningful than reading it.
It's quite a remarkable project.
It is, they couldn't stop me from doing it now, people say, how long are you going to keep doing this? And I say, well, you know, until I've interviewed every veteran in, in northern Arizona, this side of Prescott.
Right, so I'll be attending and if other council members would like to attend, they would just contact you.
Just let me know so that we can give you, have a name tag for you and have lunch for you. We're going to have a really great program at this particular luncheon. We have a veteran who lives in Sedona who was a member of the Navy Top Gun program, you know, fighter pilot, who had a really extraordinary opportunity. He was, after he left the service, he was called back by, I believe it was the State Department, to go and train fighter pilots in Iraq and also in Israel. And so, he's coming, he's going to do a slide presentation, and it's very germane to what's going on now, so, and we're going to have music. Harmony on the Rocks is going to come and sing for us, and we're going to have great food, so come.
Okay, so, if you're...
It's not open to all the public.
Okay.
I have to make that clear, because we're...
You have a limited amount of...
Money.
Right, right.
This project is totally volunteer-supported by donation, so we wish we could invite everybody and meet these extraordinary veterans and thank them for their service and...
So, if someone, if someone wanted to tell you their story?
Yes.
They would contact you?
They would contact me.
Okay, so can I share your contact information?
Yes. My phone number is everywhere.
Okay.
Or they can always call the Sedona Public Library. Even though I'm a volunteer, I have a mailbox at the library, and I'm there all the time, and they've quit asking me, you know, when are you going to stop coming? And we would just love to get every veteran's story and every civilian support person's story. The only qualifier in that is that you need to have served during a time of conflict. I don't say during wartime, because we haven't had a war since World War II, but we've had lots of conflicts. And you don't need to have served on the front lines. It's really important to, you know, hear the story of the guy that was the cook, and actually the dentist. I had a dentist that told me one of the most extraordinary things I've ever heard, so I could just go on and on and on, but I realize you don't want me to, so thank you.
Well, we would, if we had, if we had all night, we would. But I want to share this proclamation with everyone, and then you can, we'll have you pick it up when I'm done.
Okay.
Whereas, the United States Congress created the Veterans History Project in 2000 through Public Law 106380. And whereas, the Veterans History Project collects, preserves, and makes accessible the personal accounts of American War veterans, so that future generations may hear directly from veterans and better understand the realities of war and military service. And whereas, local Cottonwood veterans and their families and our community have benefited from this opportunity. And whereas, the Veterans History Project volunteers will host a midday event on November first, 2014, to honor and thank project participants. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, on behalf of the Cottonwood City Council, do hereby proclaim November first, 2014, as Veterans History Project Day in Cottonwood. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand this twenty-first day of October, 2014. And if there are any council members who would like to come up with me to give out this proclamation, you're certainly welcome to.
Could I add just one more thing?
Certainly.
I would like to let you know that the, we have some eighty or ninety of these interviews that are on DVD that are accessible through the reference desk at the Sedona Library. So, if you know a young person who's perhaps, I'm thinking this would be a great resource for a young person who's maybe thinking about joining the Marines, they can come and listen to actual Marines' experiences, or, you know, Navy or whoever else, or somebody who's researching the Vietnam War or World War II. We don't have any World War I vets, but we would like to see that resource be more widely used.
Okay, great. So, council members want to come up?
Go ahead.
Our council member is a Vietnam veteran vet. My husband is a Vietnam veteran vet. Terrence has brothers who were all in the service, and the vice mayor has a son in Special Forces, and her husband Roger served in both the Marine Air Force. So, and probably most everybody else has a story to tell about their experience, please.
Come and tell us.
Our council would like to prove that this proclamation, not in front of the vice mayor's face.
Be fine.
And thank you, Ms. Pearson. Stay safe tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for all that you did for the veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good answer. Okay, our next proclamation is a proclamation about Arizona Cities and Towns Week. And before I read this proclamation, I'd like to share a few facts with you about your cities and towns. And we have Arizona cities at work, which is what we're celebrating. In Arizona, we have a hundred and fourteen thousand square miles of land, and that makes up Arizona, and we have six point four million people as a population in Arizona. You might be surprised to know that seventy-nine percent, or a little bit less than five million, live in one of the ninety-one cities, incorporated cities and towns in Arizona. Economic activity within Arizona cities and towns produces around ninety-one percent of the state income tax and ninety-three percent of the state sales tax proceeds. So, those funds that are, come out of cities and towns do a lot for police protection, fire protection, water, wastewater utilities, city parks, city libraries, all of the things that residents enjoy and adds to their quality of life. Eighty-three percent of Arizona's workforce lives in a city or town. Arizona is the lowest, the third lowest in the nation in state and local government employees per one hundred residents. Arizona is the number one most entrepreneurial state, with five hundred and twenty startups per one hundred thousand adults. Arizona ranks second overall for its educated workforce, and Arizona is the seventh lowest in the nation in average workers' compensation costs. I just thought those facts were kind of interesting. Whereas, the citizens of the city of Cottonwood rely on local government to experience a high quality of life in our community. And whereas, local governments around the state of Arizona work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver city services such as fire, police, and emergency medical services to create safe communities. And whereas, the methods of funding these vital city services are not always clearly understood by citizens. And whereas, it is one of the responsibilities of city officials to ensure that legislators, media, and citizens understand their local government through open and frequent communication using various avenues and means. And whereas, it is important to work to encourage this connection and inform citizens and state legislators of the importance of state shared revenues in order to preserve the excellent delivery of services that our citizens have come to expect in our city. And whereas, through education and awareness, citizens, community leaders, and city staff can work together to ensure the services provided by the city of Cottonwood can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life of our community. Now therefore, it, now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood joins with the League of Cities, Arizona Cities and Towns, and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October nineteenth through twenty-fifth, 2014, as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Okay, the next item is awards. Placks of appreciation to members of the Verde Valley Teen Center Commission for assisting in the creation and operation of the Verde Valley Teen Center. And the president and Allen Marks and Sherry Marks, who have been members, were not able to attend tonight, so they will get the plaques on November third. And our city clerk was not able to attend tonight, and we'll give her her plaque. So, I just want to go ahead and talk about, a little bit about what everyone has done, because it's been tremendous. I'm just going to kind of ad lib the city clerk. I have a report on the others, but we worked on this project, as the council knows, for more than two years before the doors opened, and she started out by helping, it was, started out with Forest City, Cottonwood, and what the mayor wanted to do in the community, and the council supported it, and we did a lot of community cleanups and neighborhood revitalization and that sort of thing. But I really wanted to find out what the community wanted, because I never think it's all about me, ever. So, we had a couple of seminars, and what came out of the seminars was that most of the people in the community thought that we needed a teen center, a youth center. So, Mary Ann began working on that. She had a real passion for it, and she put a lot of hours into it over time. And so, I, even though she can't be here tonight, I know the council truly appreciates her, and I'll just read her plaque. It says, "City of Cottonwood Community Service Award Presented to Mary Ann Jimenez. An appreciation for your dedicated services in leading the organization and creation of the Verde Valley Teen Center presented the twenty-first day of October, 2014." So, if anybody sees Mary Ann, please thank her for her hard work, and she's still helping the best that she can with her busy, busy schedule. Next, I want to talk about Bob Backus and Judy Backus. Bob serves as the Vice President of the Teen Center Commission Board. Bob remodeled and brought the interior of the teen center up to code, and as the council will remember, the council authorized the use of the old fire station for the teen center. So, he remodeled that, brought it up to code. He used his personal funds to pay his crew to help with the remodel when volunteers could not be acquired. He solicited donations from local businesses for building supplies, paint, and other supplies needed for the building remodel. He acquired the building sign for the teen center. He provided the tractor for the Fall Festival hayride and volunteered all day at the first event in 2013. He helped with setup, and he helped man the Verde Valley Teen Center's booth at the Tilted Earth event. And that's just a small number of the things that he did. You know, really, we'd be here till two o'clock in the morning if we set, if we told you everything that he's done to help the youth of our community, and he's so greatly appreciated. Judy Backus has assisted with teen center fundraising efforts by baking and coordinating the donation of baked goods for events, and the teen center operates all on funds that they raise, and I always say, that's a lot of fifty cent cupcakes that they've sold to have the kind of funds that they do. She's recruited volunteers for the Fall Festival and other events, assisted with decorating and cleanup at fundraiser events, and helped with the setup of the Tilted Earth event, and she provided assistance at the booth in the morning. She attended the Verde Valley Teen Center Board meetings and offered input and assistance and provided moral support to Bob while he worked on the building. Jean Natupski supported the teen center concept since the very beginning. She went to every seminar, every meeting. She attended the Forest Cities and Teen Center Summit. She served as Board Secretary and did an excellent and timely job producing meeting minutes. And I talked to Mary Ann today, and Mary Ann just says, nobody can do minutes like Jean can. And she's since resigned, but she is so appreciated because she did so much. She helped bake goodies for teen center fundraising events, and her whoopee pies are famous, and she sold, they sold all of these cupcakes and desserts and things at the farmer's market and other places throughout the community. She helped at the teen center farmer's market booth, and she volunteered at most, if not all, of the teen center fundraising events where she helped with setup. She helped sell baked goods, cleanup, and anything else that needed to be done. She's an all-around good trooper, and she's greatly missed, but she has other things in her life that are taking up her time now, as happens with volunteers. Kathy Wambacher serves as Member-at-Large on the Verde Valley Teen Center Commission Board. She acquired donations for fundraiser events, helped out at various fundraiser events, and she worked at the booth in the afternoon at the Tilted Earth event. She coordinated juvenile workers to help clean the teen center interior and exterior prior to opening the center. She made a beautiful informational poster regarding the teen center that is used at fundraiser events. She provides valuable input to the board regarding juvenile issues. And I would be remiss if I didn't bring up Eric Glomsky, who ran the Tilted Earth Festival and donated proceeds from the event to the teen center in the total of $10,000, which was a huge shot in the arm for the organization. And I'd like to thank the city manager, Doug Bartosz, who came out when Eric asked what a good community organization would be to support, and we thank you for bringing up the teen center. That was very appreciated. So, at this time, we have some plaques to give out, and if you want to hand one down Okay, so we're going to hand out these plaques if all of the council would come up and the city manager who's been involved on staff with our teen center. If there's someone else, please hand it out. The council would be moved down. Yes, everyone, that's, that would be Bob and Judy Backus, Jean and Kathy. I'd also like to thank, right behind me, would you please come up and get your picture taken with this group, Mr. Matt? Matt McLean, our deputy clerk, has been helping us with the website, the Facebook page, and just all the things that it takes to run those kinds of things. So, thank you very much, all of you who have assisted. Okay, so if you will... Thank you very much, and we appreciate your ongoing assistance whenever possible. All right, the next item is called to the public. This... This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Are there, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes. Any comments on the minutes? If not, Mr. Pratt, or Mr., okay, Mr. Elinsky?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Elinsky made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I guess I didn't read this, did I read this, that it's the regular meeting of October seventh, two thousand and fourteen, and the special meeting of October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen? Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Item ten, Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is one-year extension of the Solid Waste Transfer Station hauling contract with Waste Management, Inc. Item number two is walking on main wine festival liquor license applications for Alcantara, Arizona Stronghold, Burning Tree Cellars, Caducea Cellars, Four Eight Wine Works, Cavallina Lea Estate Wine and Vineyards, Oak Creek Vineyards and Winery, Page Spring Cellars, Pierce Wines Arizona, and Pillsbury Wine Company North. Item number three is purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus equipment from Emergency Services, Inc. for the Cottonwood Fire Department. Item number four is renewal of the intergovernmental agreement with the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District for the joint funding of a shared youth program coordinator. Are there any items that council members would like to have polled from the agenda for discussion? Are there any items that members of the public would like to have polled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number, let's see. Item one is Resolution Number Twenty-Six Sixty-Nine, Appointing a Member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, and Baron Najad will explain this item.
Madam Mayor and council members, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission is, consists of seven members. Thus recently, Diane Lovett's resignation that created this position, a seat open. We had several, um, applications, and, um, one called in and drew his application, and all the resumes and applications were in your packet. And, uh, all the applicants were contacted for this nice meeting, and, um, that concludes my staff report.
I'm sorry, somebody pulled their application?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Who did?
Mr. Smith.
Oh, okay, Mr. Smith, Darryl Smith. So I had, oh, PNC, I had, okay, here it is. I was all prepared, but when I make the print bigger on this device, it wipes out everything, but it was saved, so. Okay, so, um, council, I would entertain your thoughts on this. I tried to think of a few questions that we might ask, since we had so many applicants, and I came up with these. And please tell me whether you approve or disapprove of any of these items. Item number one is describe how you are qualified for the commission. Not item question. Question number two is if you have read the general plan, please describe something you really like about it. Question number three is explain how the P&amp;Z Commission interacts with the public and the city council. Item number four, or item, I'm so used to saying item, I apologize. Question number four is, what is your vision for Cottonwood's future? Any comments from the council on any of the questions? You want to cut the number of questions, or?
I think we just put a potato in the microwave, it'd get it really hot.
Yes.
Have them toss it around.
Oh. You're just kidding.
Those sound like they.
Okay. I mean, okay, so, um, if the council is okay with that, I would invite, um, Ms. Najad to go ahead and, I have, let's see, so we have Elmer.
You should have three members.
We have three here tonight? Elvin Evenger, Elmer Evenger?
That should be taken out of the, um, you shouldn't have that.
We have.
You should have three, um, applicants in front of you.
Rose Lewis, okay, John Livingston, and Suzanne Poslaco?
Yes.
Okay, so these others are off. And Mr. Smith is off. So we have, and our, did, um, did the other two resign, or?
Mr. Smith asked to be, uh, out of the list due to illness, and, uh, was not supposed to be in your, in this list. I thought that was taken out of the.
Okay, so he's not applying?
No.
Okay, got it. Okay, so if, um, so who is here tonight? Is Ms. Lewis, Mr. Livingston, and Ms. Poslaco here?
All here.
They're all here, wonderful. Okay, so we'll just start, go down in alphabetical order, and Ms. Lewis, if you would come up and share some information with us, and answer whatever questions you choose to respond to.
Hello, my name's Rose Lewis. Some of you might know me as Rose Campbell. Um, I've lived here with my daughter. I was a principal at a Navajo school, K-five school. I started out as head teacher. People start putting things on my, um, desk concerning the school because it was very unsafe, um, structurally. And throughout time, I became the principal. After I became the principal, I found out that we were being poisoned with carbon monoxide gas. I worked with Bureau of Indian Education, Navajo, um, Education Line Office, and other authorities to rectify the situation. And I found out that a lot of codes were violated. So I had to go back and work very fast and very hard to try and make AYP, because as a principal, that's your goal. And, um, I managed to, I had to go find another school to put my staff, my students, everybody, except for those in the front office. And, um, I did get the school repaired, and at a cost to me, um, because, um, my health was, uh, my carbon monoxide levels were very high. That's why I had to move in with my daughter, plus my life was threatened, uh, for doing what was right. Also, um, when we moved, my children were young. I, um, took and purchased some property with my spouse, and we had to take, follow, um, Pinell County codes, and, um, it was a rural piece of property, and I managed to organize everybody and get telephone service in at a very reasonable cost, um, gets people into the prop, into a school that was only five miles away instead of thirty miles away, because we had children throwing up. I had to take and get building materials, purchase them properly, make sure that, uh, place that we put up was, um, properly laid out, and then get ahold of Pinell County, have them come out and check everything, and anything that wasn't up to code, put it up to code. Here in Cottonwood itself, we bought a piece of property, my daughter and I, on, um, Verdy Heights Drive, and, um, I've had a little bit of a run-in, and I also have talked to a lot of folks in the city of Cottonwood. They stopped by our house. Last year, at Halloween, we serviced three hundred seventy-five feet. And, um, the year before, our road was, had to be controlled by police because we had so many people. We do a lot for our community without asking anything back. But I thought, getting involved, I seen nobody was really applying, so I thought, okay, I need to give back to my community. I know something about planning and zoning. I'm willing to work with people. I've had realtors and everybody else say, "Hey, how about that house down there? Why is it sitting vacant? Why is it falling apart?" And I go, "That's a good question. Uh, why is it something being done?" To have people that own properties keep their properties up, so they're not an eyesore to our community. And if they don't want it, then sell it. Um, I helped to sell, my neighbor, he, he and his wife moved out. People stopped by, they talked to us. We just helped sell the house. And I told them, I says, "Very good buy, you know, really, you've got a lot of things going on here in Cottonwood. You get to see all the parades up and down our street." Or try promoting it. I know we have to work with all of, everyone on the city council. We also have to work with everybody in planning and zoning. I've seen things in the newspaper where some codes were not followed. I'm a diehard, a dogmatic person to make sure that everything is right with the codes, and that everybody follows it fairly. There's no injustice, that you don't go down there and, just because you work for the city and you get a permit that day. I've had that happen to me. It took me a couple months to get a permit, and one person went down there and got it just like that, same day. And I'm like, why is that person treated differently than me? Uh, I pay taxes just like that person does. And so I thought, if, you know, and you probably have, these other two people probably have better credentials than me. I'm not going to sit here and say they don't. But all I can tell you is I can learn. I have the heart of this community at best interest. I've substitute taught here in the schools with the kids. I was glad to hear that you got a teen program going on, um, because kids want it, that they want more. And I told them, I says, "You got to learn to do proposals." I'd like to see the kids sitting here and learning how government is run. They're the next generation. Um, I would like to see planning and zoning work with more of the realtors, because there's a piece of property, I was told, that the city council wants to buy, it runs behind me, and you want to make it into a nature walk. And I had a realtor from Sedona wanting to sell the two, the big plot behind, and he asked me about it, and I said, "Well, I don't know." Planning zoning is where I threw him at. I said, "You have to ask them if it can be developed, because I don't know." You know, I don't have access to all the codes, and, um, I don't know what your plans one hundred percent are. I do know that you're doing the road construction, which I think is needed, it's really bad in our community. Um, I've had a lot of people say that we need to take and work together and get more businesses in here. We're losing our population. We're losing people because we don't have jobs, and they want to see higher-paying jobs here. They want to see growth. And I know you're limited to pure square footage, so I thought I could help out. I could be an asset. I get along with people quite well. I talk to them, I find out what their pros and cons are, their needs are, and then I work within the system to get it done. And we've got a lot of buildings here in this community that really has the potential, a lot of potential. You've got an old church up here, big potential, you know? Sell it right. That little hacienda down the street from me has fallen apart. That could be sold. It could be re-taken and cleaned up, some new roofing and stuff. Be a moneymaker, more tax money for, for the community. We live on taxes, that's the truth. And it's a big, multi-billion dollar industry. And that's where I see our future. Work together, build us up, find out what the community really wants, and, um, go for it.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Okay. Um, the next person is John Livingston. Mr. Livingston?
Uh, he's left the building, ma'am.
He was here, but left.
Oh, okay. Um, the next person is Suzanne, and help me say that correctly, because I know I'm probably not doing it.
Poslaco.
Poslaco?
It's Greek.
Okay.
In its origins, I'm told.
All right.
But I'm used to it being mispronounced. I, I, I used to teach college, and I would just let my students call me Suzanne, because it was just too painful to listen to how they butchered my name. So, Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for inviting me to be here. And, uh, I've lived in Cottonwood just under four years. I moved up here from, um, Scottsdale. And I have, um, volunteered at the Humane Society Shelter, at the store where they sell products to benefit the animals, the Birding Festival. Currently, I volunteer for the Verdi Valley Sanctuary in Sedona. But I still have time, and so I saw a little blurb in the paper that you were looking for someone to fill in, uh, the end of a term for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so that caught my eye, but then it also caught my eye because it said specifically you were looking for someone who had a design background, either through experience or education. And I have both of those, because, um, I, um, worked as an interior designer, worked with architects, I worked on commercial projects, institutional projects, residential projects. I had my own business, and after I quit doing that, I started teaching. And so I, I know the language of plans and elevations, and I taught history of architecture, color theory. So in terms of being versed in that, I'm very well-versed in that. I've never served on a commission or a board, and I don't feel that I've lived here long enough to say that I have my own particular vision of where Cottonwood should go. I think it was either in the general plan or something I read that you said, relative to respecting the past, but looking forward to the future. And that would be my approach, relative to the rules and regs in planning and zoning, to help the people maintain what they love about the area, but to realize we have to move forward on some things as well. So let's see, what else did I want to say? That's about it. If you'd like to ask me any questions?
Would the council like to ask either applicant any questions? Mr. Pratt?
No, I just wanted to comment that, yeah, when I, I looked at what they were looking for, and I looked at your, um, application, I thought they could have written the job for you. Because they were looking for somebody with design experience, and you've worked in it and taught it, and I thought that was a good coincidence.
Well, thank you. And, um, I would like to be able to help, since I have time to do it.
Great. So I have ideas in the community for both of you. You have great skills, and there's lots of need, so.
Well, right now, I'm, um, for one of your sister cities, I'm designing the, um, entry for the Clarkdale Historical Society for the Cottonwood Parade.
All right.
So you'll see me around one way or another.
Okay, fantastic. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, just to let you know, um, we had a lot of great applicants. We started out with five, and we worked down, but, um, whoever is or is not chosen, I mean, whoever's not chosen, we will keep records on, um, I guess we legally can only keep them six months. We tried to keep them longer. Council wanted them to be kept longer, but the State Library rules determines that, the city attorney said. So for six months, we keep your application. Um, so don't despair if you aren't chosen, because we really appreciate everybody. Um, I would agree with Mr. Pratt, just, um, both applicants have so much to offer the community, and there will be opportunities, but I do agree that, um, Ms. Poslaco's resume shows some history in what, what the commission requires. So I would agree with Mr. Pratt, but I'm open to other council members and, um, comments, if you like. Mr. Pratt?
There's no comments, I'll make a motion.
Um, there are pretty big shoes to fill from Diane Lovett. She did a wonderful job on, on the commission. And, um, I do think that your qualifications fall right in line with the way that it was written also, that Diane did a really good job on our commission. So whoever fills those shoes, got a big one to fill.
Yeah, and I, and we're supposed to be recognizing Diane. Is that coming up, Ms. Najad? Okay, so, Ms. Najad is planning some recognition for her. She's served for so many years on both the county and the city, and... And thank you Vice Mayor for bringing that up. She's been an amazing and qualified and she's worked for the county, the city, on planning and zoning. And did trails. She, 25, 30 years ago, she started work on the Lime Kiln Trail. And now we have a trail because of her work and Frances Wetton and many others, many other trails pioneers in the community. So yes, a great big thanks to her. She's an amazing person. Members of the public, are there any comments that you would have on this item? If not, Mr. Pratt had his hand raised.
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2769, appointing Suzanne Poslakos to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacant term that expires December 31st, 2015.
Second. Mr. Pratt made the motion, the Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you both so much.
Yeah.
I'm sure there will be things for both of you to do in the community. Okay. Thank you for, thank you for all you do in the community. We appreciate you. Okay, resolution number 2767, appointing a member to the Board of Adjustment.
I'm the mayor. I'm going to read the resolution.
Oh, did I forget that? Deputy clerk, I apologize. Will you please read resolution number 276? I already marked all over it too, 69? 2769 by title only.
Resolution number 2769, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Susan Poslakos, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and establishing her term of office. I'm the mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, back to resolution number 2767, appointing a member to the Board of Adjustment. Ms. Najad.
And this commission, this board has five members. And it meets not regularly as needed when we have any variance cases. So far, since I'm with the city, we haven't had any case. So therefore, they haven't met at all. But there's one seat vacant. And we can now apply for this position. Even though we have two openings, we have only one qualified applicant for this board. We would like to fill that as soon as possible.
Okay. Yes, if you would have a meeting, you would need that quorum. I guess you could have a quorum with three, but barely. Except if one missed, you'd be out. So yes, I can see why you would like to expedite this. So, just a second till I get there. Okay, so. We have an applicant by the name of Nathan Snell. And we would, is Mr. Snell here? No?
No, I haven't met him.
Mr. Snell is not here, okay.
He was notified of this meeting.
Okay. So he's not here to talk with the council, but he did give us information and an application. So Mr. Pratt, you have your hand up.
I wanted to say, I think this is one of those proverbial no brainers.
We haven't had one of those for a few-
No, this one's pretty easy. And he looks like he's got an interesting background that would probably add a lot to the commission.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? If not, I entertain a motion. Mr. Garrison, are you up for a motion?
Sure. I'll move to approve resolution number 2767, appointing Nathan M. Snell to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term, which expires October 21st, 2017.
I'll second that.
Mr. Garrison made the motion. Mr. Jesse Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy clerk, I'm on my toes now. Please read resolution number 2767 by title only.
Resolution number 2767, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Nathan Snell, a member of the Board of Adjustment and establishing his term of office. I'm the mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is authorization for the Administrative Services General Manager to sign the Federal Transit Administration's Fiscal Year 2014 certifications and assurances for the CAT links transit systems. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Today, we're requesting that I have the authorization to go ahead and sign off on the FTA contracts, send certifications and assurances for the city Cottonwood, Cottonwood Area Transit Link System. On August 4th of this year, we received confirmation that we had obtained a grant. The grant amount is for $1,699,103, of which our partners, including Cottonwood, Clarkdale, and the county, have to have local contributions of $397,566. The remainder will be covered by FTA and ADON. As you may recall, part of the grant included four buses, of which we can't, we've read, we're ready to go, but we can't order, we weren't able to get them into first order request because there were some delays on getting the certificate assurances and assurances sent over to us. We received them last week late. And through some quick work in between, our attorney and Bruce, our transit manager, or myself, we were able to get it on today's council meeting. What that does for us now is, we're already operating in the current, in the federal fiscal year. We have been since October 1st, but we are incurring costs. All this allows me to do is to go ahead and sign off on paperwork necessary. There's still some work that needs to be done, but we'd like to go ahead and expedite it. And that's why we're asking for the authorization to sign off on this. Once this is done, we will be sending in the first of two bus orders, the first of an order for two buses, which will be, if I'm not mistaken, they should be going on the second order from ADON at the end of this month. So we, and we do need the buses quite a bit. Most of our buses are 2006s and 2007s. And they're in excess of miles and we're putting a lot of money into repairs. But the rest of it is maintenance operational for both, and administrative for both transit systems or what? If not two, for the single transit system of CAT and LINKS. And by the way, I forgot our other partner, Sedona, who we transport to, the link, people to, on the LINKS system from here to Sedona, sorry.
Is Yan not a partner on this?
Not, what I mean by partners is those partners actually contribute on to our system. The Yan does not, the YAP does not actually contribute to our system. They're independent.
Okay.
Bruce was instrumental in getting their system up and running and helped them with every aspect of getting that system up and running a few months ago. And it's working perfectly. They do link up to both the LINKS system and the CAT system. But they're not necessarily contributors funding wise to our, to our system.
I didn't realize that.
Vice Mayor?
I think we need to hurry on this. I saw a LINKS bus being towed down Sixth Street this afternoon behind a great big wrecker. I think we need a new LINKS, don't we?
That was the accident, wasn't it?
That was the accident we had today. Fortunately, we still have a backup LINKS bus, but it sustained a bit of damage. It's one of our newer buses. But we have a backup. So we, they were up and running very, very quick. We're real fortunate to have the, both the people and the equipment that we currently have. But they are getting old, the equipment, not our people.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I believe this is another no brainer, two in a row in my glory tonight. I don't see why we would not allow our finance director to sign an agreement that assures us that we can get the money-
There would be no reason-
-to provide a service that serves so many of our people, not just in city Cottonwood, but the Verdi Valley. So this one's obvious. Let's sign it. We will comply and we will continue to provide excellent service to the people who ride the bus in the Verdi Valley.
Absolutely. And it sounds like we just didn't have, we just, it was hard to lose a bus like that because we're already short of buses. So I was, I was very sad, but happy that there were no worse injuries. And can always look at it, be grateful for-
Certainly.
-for that. So, anybody from the public want to comment on this item? If not, I entertain a motion. Mr. Dowling, please?
I move to authorize Administrative Services General Manager Jesús Rodriguez to complete and execute the certification and assurance, assurances, as well as any other necessary documents to comply with the Federal Transit Administration's Fiscal Year 2014 program funding requirements.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dowling made the motion. Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sign away. Okay, item number four is approval of the rebid for the resurfacing of Mingus Avenue from Main Street to 89A to Southwest Slurry Seal, Inc. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, hello, Madam Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to introduce Eric Stewart. He's partnering with us on this Mingus Avenue project. And so he's here for moral support.
I'm with Yavapai County.
I'm sorry. I meant, he was with the Yavapai County Public Works. And he's the project engineer for their portion of that project.
All right.
He may have some more if you guys have some technical questions about the Slurry Seal. He's here, he can answer your questions.
So, okay. Go ahead.
So, the original contract did not go as planned. The, we had some difficulties with the original contractor fulfilling their obligation as far as the, how can we say this? The quality of the product that we were getting. And actually, they started out on Jack's Canyon in Yavapai County. And that's where Eric then notified us that they weren't happy with the product. And so we went out there and looked at it. We wouldn't feel like it would be a product that we would want on our Mingus Avenue. So kudos to them for letting us know ahead of time before they got to Mingus Avenue to finish the project. So right now, we're like two-thirds of the way the project is done. They did the micros, you know, we did the micro surface. We did, not the micro surface, the-
Micro grinding.
-micro grinding of it. And then we did the chip seal, rubberized chip seal. So the final product needs to have the rubberized micro surface put on it. So right now, there's temporary striping. I don't know if you guys have noticed. That's just so we could get the traffic control off of the road. In the meantime, while we're figuring out, so we had to, had to go back out to bid. And Slurry Seal was the only contractor that bid on it this time. And actually, they bid last time, but they were like three minutes late. So their bid was disqualified last time. So it could have been, all this might have been avoided if, who knows? But it's neither here nor there. But they, I have seen their product personally, went out and looked at it. They did a product in Prescott. And I had some photos. I don't know if you guys are, you want to see the photos or-
They were-
That I attached to this?
Yeah, they were in our packet. I think would be is if the public would want to see them.
See photos of it? I have them up here, we could look at them.
Council? Are we good with packets?
I think we're good with it.
Good with that? Okay. You wanted some explanation?
And if the public would like to see them, they're available on cottonwoodaz.gov.
Okay.
And they can see those if they like.
So you could see the product that was there on Jack's Canyon and then, or also the product that was put down in Prescott, which is the Southwest Slurry Seal was putting down, which is much, you can just tell visually how much of a better product, quality product that is going to be, that we're going to have. The only downside is, if you saw the bids and the bid package, it is going to be a little bit more cost. We are getting some reimbursement from the original contractor or, you know, for the work that they didn't complete, the $73,096.61. And so, did you see that table in there? Do I need to bring that up? About the difference?
We saw everything that's in here.
Okay. And then staff would just recommend that we go with a type III product. It's a larger aggregate, but we're going to get a longer life out of the product.
It will be a little bit more noisy, the way I read.
Yeah, well, we were hoping that the type II would be quieter surface. But then also, it was less cost. So we wanted to try to save money. But, you know, and then the downside is that with the type III, it is a larger aggregate. Not sure how much more noise it's going to produce versus the other one, but it will have a longer lifespan.
And it will probably last longer.
It'll last longer.
It will last longer and, I mean, because it's a major arterial road. And gets a lot more traffic than maybe a little neighborhood street.
Yeah. So, what else? We did originally have money to cover this. We had some money left over, but that money was authorized to use for canal street improvements. Because here we are, you know, hindsight, maybe we shouldn't have spent that money first before we, this product, this project was finished. But, you know, so now those funds went somewhere else, the money we had left over. And now we got to have money.
It's still a good project.
It is a good project.
To get it done.
It needed to get done. And, but now the money's going to come out of capital reserves for the balance. But, and then, but another good thing is that we're in negotiations right now with Yavapai County and then the contractor and us to see if there's some other cost savings we can come up with to even lower this cost.
Okay. And what was, I don't, it's not in front of me. It was like 23 or 30?
Oh, for, yeah, the type II.
30 more that'll come out of reserves.
It was 27,228.56 versus if we go to the type III, 38,520.56.
Council, any comments?
You can pay now or you can pay later, but you're going to pay.
Yeah. And, you know, I don't, I don't think the noise would be an issue. I think the durability is more important than a little extra noise. And the speed limit on, good part of that road is 45 max anyhow.
It's slow.
Yeah. Too slow for me, but.
Too slow for me, too. Can we change that?
You can do the traffic study.
Can you do a study about that, please? So, Council, if you have no comments, are there any comments from the public on this item? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve Southwest Slurry Seal Incorporated as the construction contractor for the final resurfacing of Mingus Avenue east of Main Street to State Route 89A, pending final approval of the city attorney.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item is direction to staff regarding future, thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you for coming.
Yes. A direction to staff regarding future city road projects. Before I get this done, I want to say that I was remiss in not mentioning Mr. Ed Kyler tonight, who is the chairperson, chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission. And he was here probably for the item. And so I just wanted to note that you were here tonight. And thank you for all you do for our Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Council.
So again, direction to staff regarding future city road projects for federal funding through the Northern Arizona Council of Governments for fiscal years 2022 and 2023. Boy, you came to work in Cottonwood and jumped right in with both feet, right?
I guess so. I didn't know that we had to go this far out to get, come up with projects. Um, yeah. There's a few projects on here that we wanted to consider. And basically, through NACOG, National Northern Arizona Council of Governments, we need to submit now our projects so we can get the money, you know, just put towards a project. Of course, this doesn't mean it can't be changed later on. It's just now to get the process started. And so for like some of these projects, like Rosetta Ranch, if we wanted that, depending which north half or south half we want to do, you know, we have to acquire right of way. There's things that we would have to do in the meantime. I mean, I know this is far out, you know, 10 years. But then to do those, some of those other things, to do, to do, you know, a study and get your environmental clearances, or just whatever needs to be done for that, for these projects. You know, we just have time to do it.
So we're on a rotation schedule.
Yes, it's a rotation. Different jurisdictions get, you know, different money allocated to them.
So we could, what, the STP funding, it says each fiscal year is 369, $369,300. One project could be funded each year for a total of two projects.
Yes.
An alternative is to fund one project using two years of funding for a total of $738,600.
Correct.
So the council would have to decide which project they would like to focus on. And they would have to tell you whether they wanted to do two projects for 369,300 or one project for seven, oh, $700,000. So.
Correct.
Mr. Pratt?
Can I mention a project I think that's needed that isn't on here? And I, I hear this from our citizens. I don't live there any longer, but I hear from people in Verdi Heights that that road really is in dire need of repairs. And it really needs a sidewalk. The road gets used more and more as a- It, the road gets used more and more as an artery to down, to Old Town here.
What's the name of that?
Verde Heights.
Oh, then, that's the name of, Verde Heights is the name of it?
Yeah.
Okay, Verde Heights.
So, I would say that-
And people say that more people walk down there, and it's pretty dangerous walking, there's, there's not a good shoulder there. And I've heard that from, oh, I would say, five or six people in the last few months who either use the road or live there.
That might be one we need to look at before ten years are up.
Yeah, yeah.
It could be, yeah.
I mean, that might be something, because we do our annual roads, where we have, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars?
That's why it was on my mind, I wanted to bring it up.
Right, so, could you make note of that, please?
I made note of that, Verde Heights. So, maybe not ten years from now, but maybe sooner.
Like next month?
We can see, we got Mingus. Mingus, Willard, De-
Ms. Garrison?
Yeah, question I have is, it shows a total of seven hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars.
Yes.
If, if we were to attack a job like the Skyline Date Street Extension, twelfth to sixteenth, that's, that's estimated at six hundred thousand, what would happen with the remaining hundred and forty thousand?
Inflation in ten years?
Yeah, I'm not really sure, but I'm sure we could find a place to put it.
I mean, is it-
Well, also, some of these, these costs, that I, I just kind of preliminary, put out some numbers here, they don't include things like right-of-way acquisition or storm drain improvement. This is just for the road.
The pavement.
The pavement, and maybe it might include some sidewalk, but anything outside of that arena, you know, you would need some extra money for.
So, the estimate isn't necessarily a-
This is not written in stone.
-good estimate.
Well, it's just a ten-year from now kind of preliminary estimate.
A lot can happen in ten years.
What do you call, what do you call that? Just, just throw it out there, I mean-
Projection.
Projection.
And the fact that you can change it, I mean-
We can also always change it, just to give me an idea of what you think would be a good project.
But I thought that was a good project myself, that-
I, yeah.
I, I like the idea that, yeah, I mean, because, like, we're doing now Mingus from Willard to Tenth, and, you know, we still only got, what, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, but we're still, we're spending one point million, one over a million dollars on top of that, you know, to get it done, which is, we do need it, but we don't necessarily need to spend that much money all the time if we don't have it. We can maybe go with smaller projects.
Looking at the list, I really, there's two jobs in here that really stand out to me, and that's Grosseto Ranch Road.
Okay.
And the Skyline Date Street Extension from twelfth to sixteenth, and I'd like to not even stop at twelfth, I'd like to see that carried all the way through to Tenth Street.
Okay.
That, that whole area, you know, the staff has spent just an enormous amount of time dealing with the residents in Crestview, and that neighborhood and Sixteenth Street coming in off of Fur, because of the amount of traffic that comes out of those neighborhoods that skates through those different residential areas to try and get out to Main Street down, you know, in front of Verde View Motel and, and all that, and, and I think that would really eliminate a lot of that traffic out of those residential neighborhoods and put it back onto that street where it would be more appropriate. Also, the Grosseto Ranch Road, you know, that's a huge piece of land, we have Mr. Grosseto has come in here a couple times now over the last year or so, talking about supporting his economic development for that parcel up there, this would go a long ways to doing that, but I think more so, it would really create a whole nother route for traffic to get-
For traffic.
Into Old Town and out of Old Town. Right now, like we had Thunder Valley Rally, the only way to get to Clarkdale was to go all the way to Number One Food and back around and down. This would create that path getting across and would really, I think it would change the dynamics of how people move in and out of the upper Verde Valley and in through Old Town and vice versa.
Oh, yeah, Grosseto Ranch is a, is a, one of my favorite picks, just because of that region.
It's a huge chunk of land, and it's a, you know, a long swath, but I think, you know, those to me just really change the way the traffic moves around town, I think that would be really nice to open up those arteries versus the rest of these jobs are pretty much just road repair, you know, which we should be dealing with anyway, so.
I agree on both of those projects.
Oh, yeah.
So, if you did a, I mean, would that be a, a PAD, Grosseto Ranch Road, would that development be a PAD? And would this road not be part of a PAD?
We'd have to look at the PAD, but I think it is currently a PAD, but they're also going through a change up there. But I don't remember if, I'd have to look at the, you know, the, the land use plan to determine whether or not Grosseto Ranch Road is, is in there. And it's a possibility that it is, probably a fairly good possibility that at least a portion of it is. But again, in case that doesn't develop, I mean, the city may want to choose to come, come back at a later time and actually do that piece.
All right, I could see, don't go ahead.
Mr. Delling?
I would agree on those two projects, just looking at, since that's going to go through and, and greatly serve Mr. Grosseto, it may help in any negotiations for right-of-way there, it might be, it might help to lower the cost of that project if he was willing to work with us on the right-of-way acquisition. It would definitely benefit both parties. And then, the other, the other part of that, that Mr. Garrison was talking about, the extension through, the only pit, pratfall I see with that is we may overload very substandard streets over on the Tenth Street, Eighth, and that whole little mosaic in there, some of those we don't even have two lanes. So, I would just be very leery of punching a new road through there. I know it's a long ways out, but I'd be leery to punch a road through there and flood those roads that are very substandard with any more traffic than they have for the residences on them.
Isn't that, I mean, skyline, isn't it sort of like supposed to be an arterial someday, though, I mean, to allow more traffic?
It's all platted, I mean, it was part of the subdivision that there already exists, at least from twelfth Street back to Sixth, those roads already exist, most of them weren't put in because of topography, basically, or a wash or a hill.
Right, because there's quite a bit of, of washes and kinds of things that would, but I mean, how would, so how would it help traffic? How would it release-
Well, Tenth Street, Tenth Street has got a barrier, because you can't get, you can't get from Fur to eighty-nine A on Tenth Street. So, it's kind of a, it's almost like a dead end.
It's a huge barrier, yeah, everything's dead in out there.
So, that corner, so it, it puts, it puts in, and you can't get through on Seventh either, so it puts a lot of traffic on twelfth, on Eighth, and on Sixth that, that could cut straight through and across versus having to go all the way either out to eighty-nine A and back in, or all the way up to Fur and back in. So, I, I agree, you know, those, those streets never were really put in wide enough, especially the ones going east and west, weren't really created for a large amount of traffic, but I, I'm not sure you would increase, you're going to increase traffic a lot, but I think it's, it's more of a, it reduces the nuisance and, and it would take a little of that load off of Fur, it would take a little bit off of eighty-nine A and, and a little bit off of Eighth, Seventh, and Twelfth, or Eighth, Sixth, and Twelfth because of the way that, once you're in that area, you're kind of locked in, it's like a maze, fine trying to figure out how to get out and then how you can get your quickest way to where you're going. And that's one of the reasons why we have the problem over at Crestview, is people are looking for that shortcut to get across, and they go right through the residential neighborhoods to do that, so.
I'm wondering if this Ogden Ranch Road project wouldn't be something that the county, Yavapai County, Mr. Stewart, you would have to talk to your board of supervisors, but if that couldn't be a collaborative project, I know we went in there and annexed it, along with some Forest Service lands and that, but the fact is, is that there's no one in the city of Cottonwood that uses that road, it's all county residents.
I see.
So, it might be a collaborative process, project. The county's collaborated on Mingus Avenue Extension, they've collaborated on Fur Street, and, you know, ten years down the road, it might be something we could both pitch in and, and together.
I agree.
We were just thinking about moving it from two sixty up to the top of the road, it's really steep and-
Mm-hmm. It'd be nice if it could be done the whole way for the residents that live out there.
It'd be nice to be done the whole way, yeah. I think that part right there would be really-
The county's got a way, though, how many residents are out there, and how much would the project cost, and how many of those residents are, I mean, so now they have to come in on Old, Old, is it one seventy-nine or two seventy-nine? And they have to come into Cottonwood, go out Fur if they don't want to take a dirt road, so.
I have Grosseto Ranch Road up here, if you can see that. Mingus is part of a community, the most, the most part of it there to the south, and then to the north, I think that's residential.
I, I was looking at your, your drawing that you put in the packet, and that north section looks like, I don't know if it was just drawn that way, or you were actually envisioning a, a realignment, instead of dropping that all the way back over on Kinder Heights, where you looking at taking it straight out?
There would have to be some kind of alignment study done to figure out what the best route would be, because right now, the way it is now is not very, going into Verde Heights is probably not a good fit. We're thinking about going more, maybe, maybe a little bit west.
Right, right, not dropping down into Kinder.
Yeah, not, yeah, not.
Yeah, because when you get to the bottom there, there's really no land, those people parking the road, you've plugged the road.
Perpendicularly where the R three would be in that area?
Somewhere, yeah, to the south will wash.
Okay, yeah.
So, there would have to be some kind of a study done to figure out what the best is.
So, skipping over to another street, the Mills, the Main Street, Cottonwood Street to Mingus Avenue, Mill and Phil, one point seven million dollars, that's probably something we'll try to do anyway, right? No matter what, maybe before ten years?
Maybe before ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't-
That whole piece, the Old Town, we've talked about.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to last another ten years.
Yeah, okay.
But, go back to Grosseto, if counsel wants to talk about that some more? Okay.
We kind of broke it up into two parts, just because, you know, we'd have to acquire, you know, right-of-way for the north half.
Just seems sense to look at it, and if in ten years from now you need to change or in those ensuing ten years, then we could change.
But I know, for NACOG, though, if we were going to go with the north half where we had to acquire acquisition, they would want a guarant, some kind of guarantee that we were, we're working on it, we're progressing towards it, and that we would have it within the next, I don't know how many years, that, that we would, that funding set aside for that, you know, for the, for the right-of-way and-
So, the actual Grosseto Ranch Road is, would be over two million dollars?
It could be more, because it doesn't take into account, you know, the right-of-way.
The rights of way.
Right-of-way and any environmental clearances.
At, at any point between now and ten years, a developer come in, decide to put a road through there as well.
For us, right?
So, that, that's another thing to consider, is that-
Yeah.
Any one of those could happen, there's a lot.
Mr. Grosseto might sell it to someone, and-
It's true.
They would be willing to develop the whole PAD.
It might, it might help, though, with his pursuits if we show an interest in getting that done.
Right.
Well, I'll try, Mayor, I really think the, the Date Street is probably our, our best bet, it's a, it's a neighborhood that's already been developed, so we kind of own it at this point and need to make it work better.
That's probably my favorite, too.
Yeah, just for that, we, some right-of-way would have to be acquired.
Plus, it's within the amount of money that we're going to-
And it's closer to the amount of money that we want.
I mean, I totally agree about Grosseto Ranch Road, but I, I see that it's developing in the far future, and perhaps we could work with the developer when that does occur, so.
And, and Mayor, council members, as you'll recall, there is discussion going on about that piece of property right now with some potential. And if it is part of the PAD, you know, we may want to wait and see what happens as to whether or not that development is actually going to happen or not.
Okay. So, it looks like Skyline Date Street is a, is a good pick?
That's from twelfth to sixteenth, is it?
From twelfth to sixteenth, but I can change it to Tenth as-
I like that, too.
Okay.
It should go to Tenth, yeah.
We can, we can always change that, yes.
That would just open that whole neighborhood up in there that's pretty confined.
Yeah, if we could get Date or Elm through, would really, but Date would be even further, more centrally located, would really open that area.
It would be very helpful, because you go out there and you're just driving around all over trying to find a way out.
Yeah.
GPS doesn't work in this community as well.
Okay, so, is the consensus of the council that that would be our priority at this time?
Yeah, it'll be our priority in ten years.
And if future councils can change our minds for us, right?
We can always be, but I have to put something into NACOG within this month to say, hey, we have this project through now.
Right. And with all the washes there, and you have your work cut out for you, your engineering talents will be needed.
Okay, so, we, Skyline Date Street Extension is probably the-
Yes.
-one to go with? Okay. All right, I will submit that to NACOG and-
And you did extend that to Tenth.
To Tenth, I'm going to change it to Tenth, yes, I'll change that. Good, thank you for your direction, I really appreciate that. And it's always a, to know what, what community wants, so, you know more than I do.
Okay. Any comments from the public on this item? Mr. Turbill, do you have any comments on this item? No? Okay, so, thank you very much, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
The next item is claims and adjustments.
I move we pay the claims. Second.
Mr. Elinsky made the motion, Mr. Garrison seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, I move to adjourn.
Second.
The vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We're adjourned.
I have a question.